Good evening. I'd like to call tonight's-
President.
Vice Mayor Slotan.
We stand here as the people, chosen by the people, to care for them, watch over them, and help them when we can. This includes all people in the city of Clear Lake. Those whom they encounter, whether equal or not, does not matter, because in the end, we're all equal. Please do the job of the people and work together to give us a just conclusion. In Lord's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Those were excellent remarks. May be seated. Okay, first, I'm going to go over the meeting procedures. All items on the agenda will be open for public comments before final action is taken. Citizens wishing to introduce written material into the record at the public meeting on any item are requested to provide a copy of the written material to the Administrative Services Director, City Clerk, sitting over here to the right. Prior to the meeting date, so that the material may be distributed to City Council prior to the meeting. Speakers must restrict comments to the item as it appears on the agenda and stay within a three-minute time limit. The mayor, myself, has a discretion of limiting the total discussion time for an item. If you're on Zoom meeting, please note that only written comments will be taken via Zoom using the Q&amp;A chat feature. Please enter your comment on the Q&amp;A chat feature if you have some. Okay, first thing up is the adoption of the agenda. Mr. City Manager, do we have any modifications to the agenda?
No modifications, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Okay, may I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as posted?
I move to adopt the-
Motion is made, been made.
Adopt the agenda, there we go.
By Councilwoman Downey. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
And second by Vice Mayor Slotan. Please vote on the portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, we'll now move on to presentations. And the first one will be the presentation of proclamation declaring May 11th through May 17th, 2025, as Police Week. I will read the proclamation, and Chief Hobbs will have a couple of comments after that. "Police Week 2025, whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Clear Lake Police Department. Whereas, since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in duty. Whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas, 20 new names, 20 new names of fallen heroes, are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 148 officers killed in 2024. Whereas, May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags will be flown at half-staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the City Council formally designates May 11th through May 17th, 2025, as Police Week in the city of Clear Lake and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation, dated this first day of May, 2025, and signed by myself as mayor of Clear Lake." I will give this over Chief Hobbs. I'd like to present this to you. Do it after or before your remarks?
Yeah, I'll leave the remarks real quick, then we'll have them come up.
Okay.
"During National Police Week 2025, we honor and recognize the dedicated employees of the Clear Lake Police Department who serve our community with courage, integrity, and unwavering commitment. Their daily efforts to protect and serve do not go unnoticed, and we are grateful for your sacrifice, professionalism, and resilience. This week and every week, we thank you for standing on the front lines to keep Clear Lake safe."
Chief Hobbs, Officer of the Clear Lake Police Department. My humble pleasure to present this proclamation to you. Moving on to my second proclamation. This is the presentation of proclamation declaring May 4th through May 10th, 2025, as Public Service Recognition Week. Whereas, our nation's progress has been fueled by the efforts of selfless citizens who come together in service to their fellow Americans to change our country for the better. And whereas, during Public Service Recognition Week, we honor those who dedicate themselves to ensuring America's promise rings true in every corner of our country, and we commit to upholding the values they fight for every day. And whereas, Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, including employees of the city of Clear Lake. These unsung heroes do the work that keeps our city working. And whereas, without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in our democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. And now, therefore be it proclaimed that the Clear Lake City Council does hereby designate May 4th through May 10th, 2025, as Public Service Appreciation Week in the city of Clear Lake. All citizens are encouraged to recognize accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city, dated this first day of May, 2025, and signed by me as mayor. Now, I know that there's nobody that's designated on here to accept this, but I see several official city employees sitting right over there. So I'm going to come up, you're going to come up, and we're going to present this to you. Okay, we have one more proclamation. And that is proclamation declaring May 12th through May 16th, 2025, as Military Appreciation Week. Whereas, the rights of life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness enumerated in our Declaration of Independence secured by the Constitution and the Bill of Rights and enjoyed by every citizen of the United States are a direct result of the members of the United States Armed Forces. And whereas, the sacrifices made by the members of the United States Armed Forces and family members who support them preserve the liberties that enrich our nation, our state, and our city. And whereas, our citizens have a proud history, a service in the United States Armed Forces in both times of peace and times of war. And whereas, many citizens of the city of Clear Lake continue on active duty in the National Guard and in reserve components of the United States Armed Forces. And therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council, the Clear Lake City Council, does hereby wish to recognize and honor all members of the United States Armed Forces, past and present, as well as their families for their service and sacrifice, and hereby designates May 2025-
Oh, I ran through this.
What branch were you in, Ken?
Navy.
You're in the Navy?
United States Marine Corps, sir.
I'm sorry?
Marine Corps, sir.
Marine Corps, wow.
Yes.
It's going to be really good around you. All right, we'll- All right, we're done with my parts of the proclamations. We're now going to have a presentation of our annual Public Education and Government Channel Board Report. Supervisor Savatje will present this one.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I do miss the days where Ed Roby did this. It was so much easier. So every year, we need to do an annual report for PEG TV to let the council know, since you contribute to PEG TV, what we've been up to, what we're planning to do. And so let's go ahead and move on to the next slide, and we'll go through this presentation quickly. We have new board members this year. For Clear Lake, we have Mary Wilson. Her alternate is Jessica Hooton, sorry, Councilmember Wilson and Councilmember Hooton. We also have Councilmember Price from Lakeport. And so it's good to have fresh eyes and fresh interest in PEG TV and looking forward to their contribution. I continue to be on PEG TV for a while. Ed Roby was my, not my alternate, but he took my place for many, many years because he's been involved for so long and helped create PEG TV in the first place. But I've been there for about two and a half years. And for education, we have Kevin Mack, who is the IT, I'm going to call him Director, I don't know if that's the correct title, but who had a high level of IT over at Lake County Office of Education. And then we have had no public member for quite some time, and Elaine Brown has submitted her application. And so we have accepted her application and looking forward to her contribution as well. Our station manager, you know very well, is Thomas DeWalt. Our assistant station manager, we just selected Cheyenne Blue. And between Cheyenne and also Alan Combs, we now have multiple videographers who are available so that when Thomas is too busy with all the other things we have him doing, now we have a choice of videographers to be able to do the work that is requested of us.
One quick question. So Ed Roby is completely off the board now?
He has not been a board member for two and a half years.
All right, well, I just wanted to be sure of that.
I don't know if that was me or someone else was. Let's go ahead and move on. So our annual update on the budget. This is for this year's budget. I'm currently working on next year's budget. I'll be sending that to the cities, especially since I'm thankful the city takes care of our finances here in-house. And I'll explain that a little bit more. Our revenues are $52,000. They used to be only about $20,000. And $52,000 is just an estimate. We actually anticipate maybe it'll be more around the $60,000. Because we're now contracting for a lot of our services, the county is hiring PEG, Farm Bureau is hiring PEG, Lake County EDC is hiring PEG, Lower Lake Community Action Group is hiring PEG, and others, we are starting to see a lot more revenue coming in, which allows us to have a little bit more flexibility on our operating budget. Our operating budget is solely based on our services that we sell and the contributions from the jurisdictions. The city of Clear Lake used to contribute $8,000. Now we've recalibrated its $10,000, but that's in-kind contribution. Just didn't make sense for what was being provided to us. The $10,000 covers the audit, the insurance, the financial holding of our accounts, and also the station right here in City Hall, as well as, I'm going to pause. No longer are we getting the studio for free. In the senior center, we pay $10,000 a year for that studio. That was part of our recalibration. City of Lakeport provides $2,000, and the county of Lake provides $15,000 for their agreement contribution. But because of the contract that we have with them, it's actually probably going to be about $32,000 this year that we just amended the contract. Next, please. Our expenses, approximately $43,000. Our operating budget is solely for paying for our staff. So that would be, again, Thomas DeWalt and Cheyenne Blue and anyone else that we hire on the side. So our station manager brings in about $28,000, or pulls in about $28,000. Our editor is $400 a month, so $4,800. And again, the facilities and insurance and all that, $10,000 is what we pay. So we have two separate budgets. One is operating budget. This is where we pay for our staff. And our capital budget, that's where we buy all of our equipment, our hardware, anything else. Our capital budget comes from the 1% pass-through. Whoever has MediaCom, 1% of their bill goes directly to PEG. So we automatically get franchise fee agreements through the city, both cities and the county. And overall, we're pulling in about $50,000, $54,000 a year. It's slowly decreasing as we see people, especially right now. I'm going to guess that some of the changes we're seeing in the decrease is because of satellite access to internet such as Starlink. It's really big here in Lake County. It works very well here in Lake County. And so we're seeing a decrease in access to MediaCom. Our expenses for our capital budget, we spent about $32,000 on all of the equipment, cameras, upgrades, anything that we're doing for making sure that we have what we need for the services we're providing, including new speakers for your concert series. Current activities, supporting local events. Our sound system is available for not just your concert series, but any other concert series that happens around the county. We offer videography. Our new contract, especially with the county, for our municipal advisory councils has been really big for us, a big change. And so we have seven advisory councils. We do videography for all seven. So that's one meeting per month. We purchased a mobile audiovisual unit that came along with that. That was about $10,000. And right now, we just approved and we purchased and are starting to get everything set up, including an MOU with Kingdom Games. In Lakeport, they want to set up a podcast room for the public to access. We are negotiating terms so that we have free access to that podcast so we can create podcasts and create content for PEG. And we also want to receive content from the creators that are going to be working with Kingdom Games. So it'll be a private-public partnership where he gets to make some money, we get to get some content, and in exchange, we provide all of the equipment. We do nothing about the furniture, or the room, or the infrastructure. That's all up to Kingdom Games to do. But we want to provide the equipment so that we can, again, collect the content, put it on our platforms online, and show it on Channel 8. So future activities, we're excited to, we've been trying every year, but we're still excited to continue trying to work with our schools. It really depends on, it's kind of like the school garden. If you have a teacher who has a passion for school gardens, you will have an amazing school garden. And if you lose that teacher, or there's no more time in that teacher's schedule, the school garden will typically fade away. Same thing with audiovisual type of classes. Typically, if you have the teacher that has the interest, that will happen, but then it goes away. Alan Siegel was an amazing person to work with and trying to get PEG in there. But ever since he left, it's been a little difficult to find the right point people. At least it cannot die, and we're working throughout all the school districts. We want to continue to increase our operational budget. Right now, we're being hired by Mendocino to do audiovisual work over at a tattoo convention. So we're excited. We're getting known, and people want to hire us even out of county. We want to increase our viewers, especially online. We know TV is slowly going away, but we have a strong online presence. We want to activate Lakeport PEG Connection. They have not been able to go directly through the PEG station, and I hope this is not new news for you. I apologize, but you are not directly streamed onto PEG currently. The only one that's able to stream directly to PEG is the county. There's been some changes that happened at MediaCom. We need to get them back in here so that when you guys are live at 6:00 PM, it is going and streaming on PEG. That is not the current status, and that's not what it should be. So we're working on fixing that. But we've never had Lakeport on, and we need to get Lakeport on. We want to pursue more partnerships. Again, partnering with some of those aforementioned groups. We want to continue to grow that. One of the, two things that we have kind of in the future prospect of plans. One is, we've sat down with KPFC. We're going to continue to work with them to see if we can get to a yes answer. We have some that are very interested, but we want to put a podcast system in their radio booth. That way, those programmers that are comfortable with being on video, they can hit record, and they'll be on video. If they don't want to, they just don't use the equipment, but the equipment is there. We see that as a really good opportunity as well during our emergencies. They broadcast a lot of information during emergencies. If we can somehow use their podcast as a livestream, direct to PEG TV or online, then that would be another way for people to get some of their information. The other one is, we want to create a news show. We only have print or articles online for news in our local media. We want to try to create a video news show. At the very least, we're looking at once a month, just to get us started. But we're talking about looking at partnerships with local businesses to fund this operation, hiring newscasters, producers, the likes. And so we're trying to go big with this idea, but we're all very excited about it. And we have a lot of other excited people outside of PEG that want to contribute and be a part of it. And I believe that is the last of my slides. If you have any questions, that's what I'm here for.
Are there any questions from council? Anything here? You did a great, you did a great job Supervisor Savatje. And I think Alan wants to, City Manager Flora wants to say something to you.
I wanted to just say something to actually the council. And just let you know that the new sound system that we installed at the end of last year, PEG contributed $15,000 towards that. So thank you to PEG for that.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Nice to be acknowledged. Thanks again. Okay. We will now move on to public comment. This is the time for any member of the public to address the City Council on any matter not on the agenda. That is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act, with limited exceptions, does not allow the council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. The council cannot take action on non-agenda items. Concerns may be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. Please note, the comments from the public will also be taken on each agenda item. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. When I, if I happen to cut you off, I usually try to give you a couple seconds or a half minute to finish up your remarks. But please do not take it personally when I do cut you off, if I have to. Anyway, is there anyone who wishes to speak here in the council, in the chamber? Is there? Okay, I don't have any notes up here, so. I think that this lady right here had her hand up first. I know it is. Please come up and state your name and where you live, and I know you know how to do that.
No, I've been here. City Council, my name's Patty Duke. I live in Clear Lake, pretty much downtown Clear Lake. And I'm here because I'm disgusted, but I'm not afraid. Single woman, living alone on a private road, only one house next to me. A lady moved into the house next to me with three children. I'd say two or three, and seven and eight, so three kids. Wonderful kids, okay. So that was about two and a half years ago. And then about six months after that, daddy arrived from Mexico. And I'm not prejudiced, okay? So pretty soon, down below my property, across the private area that's not theirs, there's music in that residence over there. And then alternating, you can hear the amp go on, music over there. I call it canteen of music. I don't care what they want to play all day. But when it goes into the night and one in the morning. Anyway, I started calling after a while. So then there's a bright white spotlight and a bright green spotlight to the gully. And people were coming up after dark. Well, I explained it away. They're coming up for food, they're coming up for a shower, they're coming up. I had all kinds of explanations why they're coming up, why my dog's barking, the dogs across the way are barking. But then I started sitting out in January, middle of January to the middle of March. And I saw the pattern. I saw the cars, I saw the flashlights. The light next door would go out if I was out there, but then it would go on, the deck light, if I went in the house. And then I'd come out and flash my lights at the lights, at the cars. But they wouldn't come up until after I went in the house. March 9th, I had projectile vomiting and diarrhea for 24 hours. Went to the hospital, St. Helena, St. Helena, for three days. Thought about it. What did I drink last? What did I eat last? It was water. The water bottle that I drank out of was still out on the deck. I got it, got a magnifying glass, saw a pinhole in the neck. Called the police, eventually had the police come over, take a report and all that. Fifteen more bottles in my outside refrigerator for when I work outside or have workers outside. It's in my carport. Two of them overfilled, multiple punctures in the nick of the bottles. So, and that would be the local neighbors that don't want their supply to go away because I've been harassed by a local neighbor. Defoliant put on my bushes, on my roses, on my trees. Cat shot with pellets. And that's a single woman living alone. Middle of paradise. I mean, I come from paradise, middle of Clear Lake. So I'm disgusted, but I'm not afraid. I have bear mace at night. I have pepper gel during the day. And I'll use what I have to use. But this continues. And she's got a 10-month-old baby in the house next door, and the three kids, they're good kids. They're pissed off at me because I sit out there last night until 1:30 in the morning to discourage with my flashlight and my son motion detector that goes, flashes their way, to stop these people. They're poisoning people in our community. The police can't do anything because they know. They're doing it off the deck. So they have to be seen. There has to be a video, it has to be a picture. So when I go in the house, that's when the dogs start barking across the way, and my dog and all that. That's when they're trying to come up. I don't know if they're mules. I don't know what they're selling, meth, fentanyl, heroin. I don't know, but it's drugs. And it pisses me off. Great kids and a baby.
Mrs. Duke, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that has public comments? This is Garcia. Come up and state your name and where you live.
Hi, my name's Margaret Garcia. I live here in the city of Clear Lake. I came up mainly to say that I am thrilled to see that the street lining is started and going on in such crucial places that it's needed. So I'm hoping that that's just going to continue throughout the city. So I'm really happy to see that actually come into fruition. And I have to add that this lady's complaints, I have heard from various other people. So it's a common thread that I hear time and again. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garcia. There any other one up? Mrs. Hummel, state your full name and relive.
My name's Stephanie Hummel, and I'm from Clear Lake. And I just had a couple things I wanted to bring up. I went out to the lake because I was going to go out there on Mother's Day, and I wanted to try and prepare and plan and stuff like that. And it dawned on me, my question is, whose job is it to pick up the dead fish that are right there on the shore of, around the lake in the public, in the public? So I'm just, I've talked to a few people, and they said it was their job, their job, and their job. But I'm just hoping by Mother's Day, someone will pick up some of the dead fish that are out there. And you know what?
I have to tell you, I picked some up last Saturday morning, if it helps.
You know, it would just be nice if someone could go around once a week, every other day. They're going to be there all the time. I mean, I would walk the lake if I could, just for exercise and stuff. But I don't really want to dodge the fish. And I would really like to put my feet in the lake, and I couldn't even do that. And I see people out there swimming. And I mean, I just went there today to look. So I just would like to suggest that we don't let that go by the wayside while we're fixing the whole city up. You know, we got the lake. So if somebody asked me if I would bring this up- So if somebody asked me if I would bring this up, is the address is over 25th and the avenues by Irving and Boils, that it might be some kind of fire danger. And I did notice while I was over there, there isn't any stop signs on the main streets there, and that's not good. And I just had one other question, which was the food courts. You know, I didn't know if they're going to come back or not, or in the food court area. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hummel. Are there any other comments in the public? Madam Clerk, are there any online?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of council requests otherwise, or if staff has requested change under adoption of the agenda, in which case the item will be removed for separate consideration. Any items so moved will be taken up following the motion to approve the consent agenda. City Manager Flora, are there any items to remove from the consent agenda, item six, five, or six?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any member of council wish to discuss the consent agenda items? Seeing none?
I move that we approve.
Wait a minute. City Member of the public wish to speak on an item in the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, now?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Sladen.
I'll second it.
And seconded by Councilmember Wilson.
Councilmember Downey, how do you vote? Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move on to the public hearing, item number seven, public hearing to hear and act upon appeals of orders to abate for the properties located at 15893 33rd Avenue, 16721 Cash Creek Lane, 4800 Old Highway 53, 4782 Yarrington Court, 4030 Hayward Avenue, 14042 Woodland Drive, 3228 Third Street, 3297 Third Street, 3152 Ninth Street, 3426 12th Street, 3307 13th Street, 3188 14th Street, 3059 Ace Lake Drive, and 3223 East Lake Drive. In accordance with Clear Lake Municipal Code 10, Resolution Number 2025-16, is there anyone going to present this? Mr. Far, I'm sorry.
Lieutenant Peterson will present this, that report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. We are here this evening to conduct Phase Two hearing regarding properties identified for abatement under the CalRecycle Grant Initiative. This initiative is a major step forward in addressing chronic nuisance and safety issues impacting our neighborhoods. In January 2024, the City of Clear Lake Code Enforcement Bureau applied for a CalRecycle Grant to fund demolition and abatement of nuisance properties with open enforcement cases that had failed to reach compliance. In summer 2024, we were awarded $477,469 to carry out this work. The purpose of this grant is to combat widespread illegal dumping. Many of these sites are filled with abandoned vehicles, trash, and appliances posing health, safety, and environmental risks. These conditions not only threaten residents, but degrade property values and community The grant also supports reduction of fire hazards and enhancement of public safety. Clear Lake is a region at high risk for wildfire. Properties with dry vegetation, trash, and damaged structures are particularly vulnerable. Cleaning up these properties helps protect our city and its people. In November 2024, the city council held a hearing for 16 Phase One properties. Three appeals were, excuse me, two appeals were submitted and denied. Properties with burned homes, active dumping, and high fire risk were prioritized for immediate The city conducted a competitive bid process in December of 2024, receiving 12 bids in January of 2025. The lowest responsive bid was $229,400, which was awarded in February. Phase One abatement began in April of 2025, targeting 15 sites. The work is anticipated to finish by the end of May. After accounting for the project cost, approximately $204,640 remains in CalRecycle funding for Phase Two sites. Tonight's agenda includes a review and consideration of appeals submitted by property owners or interested parties. These appeals challenge the city's order to abate issued for properties in violation of Health and Safety Codes, and this is a list of the properties that the mayor previously The purpose of this hearing is to allow property owners to contest the city's determination that their property consists of a public nuisance or safety hazard. Council may consider evidence, testimony, and staff reports in their decision. Following review, council may grant the appeal and halt abatement, deny the appeal, and proceed or modify the order. The recommended action is the adoption of Resolution 2025-16 to uphold abatement orders for all listed properties. Each property listed has been evaluated by code enforcement officer and deemed a public nuisance. Violations include junk accumulation, unpermitted structure, fire hazards, encampments, and blight. The city issued legal notices, including orders to abate and notices of intent to each property owner. Notices were mailed and posted on site. No properties listed have achieved voluntary compliance. The first property is located at 15893 33rd Avenue, associated with case number CE24-0065. This property is owned by William Harris III and has been identified as a public nuisance due to the presence of a burnt-out, partially destroyed structure, overgrown vegetation, and the storage of junk and interoperable vehicles. The structure was red-tagged and deemed unsafe for occupancy, with violations cited under both the City, the Clear Lake Municipal Code and California Health and Safety Code. The owner has been notified and has expressed disinterest in retaining ownership or addressing the violations. This slide shows the area within the city of Clear Lake where the property is located, which as you can see is in the avenues. So these photos, taken on January 23, 2024, show the initial conditions, including severe fire damage, structural instability, and widespread debris accumulation. This site poses immediate risk to public safety, has become a target for illegal dumping and transient activity. More than a year later, as seen in this photo, and here's a close-up, from April 2025 images, there has been no meaningful change. The conditions have persisted or worsened, validating staff's assessment that voluntary compliance will not be achieved and warranting abatement through CalRecycle support. Next property is located at 16721 Cash Creek Lane, associated with case number CE19-0180, owned by Eduardo Cesar Bobadilla. I'm hoping I say that right. This site has an extensive history of violations dating back to 2019. The issues include broken windows, accumulation of tires, abandoned vehicles, mold growth, unsafe electrical conditions, and dilapidated structures. Numerous attempts of communication and compliance were made with the owner and family members with no lasting remediation. And this is a photo of, or a map where it's located, down off a damn road along Cash These early photos from May of 2019 illustrate the deteriorated condition, excuse me, conditions including structural damage, excessive waste. Property has been the subject of repeated complaints by neighbors who have expressed concern over declining property values and safety. These photos were taken 4/23 of 2025, despite several years of warnings, administrative citations, and temporary cleanup efforts. Property remains in violation. Staff recommends abatement to resolve these longstanding public health hazards. Next property located at 4800 Old Highway 53 and associated with case number CE23-0773 is registered to Erva C Denham. The site has been identified as a location for illegal encampments, extensive trash accumulation, and uncontrolled vegetation. Staff investigation revealed the owner to be deceased with no active party managing the property due to its proximity to other residences and frequent unauthorized activity poses ongoing health and fire hazards. And this is just off of Old Highway 53, Yarrington Court, over by the ball fields behind the gas station there. As shown in these June 2023 photos, parcel contained multiple tent encampments surrounded by significant amounts of garbage and organic debris. Initial outreach and efforts by community volunteers provided temporary relief, but the underlying nuisance is quickly returned. This is the exterior brush, excuse me, area of that. Despite occasional volunteer cleanup, vegetation has become overgrown again, and trash is widespread. Transient reoccupation has been reported and assessing formal abatement action to prevent further recurrence and align with CalRecycle Grant goals. 4782 Yarrington Court is next to that previous property. Under case number CE23-0772, the owner of record is Helen Palacios. The parcel has been the site of a now abandoned homeless encampment with residual trash and overgrown vegetation, despite repeated citations and attempts at cleanup, including temporary efforts from local volunteers. The property has not achieved sustained compliance. Again, like I said, it's next to that previous property. While some of the surface debris was cleared, excuse me, in May of 2023, photos documented E21-2017 is owned by Earl Boat. E21-2017 is owned by Earl Boat. This site has been the subject of complaints and inspections finding involving excessive debris, overgrowth, and structural deterioration. Initial violations were observed in 2021, and continued citations have not resulted in full compliance. And this residence is off a valley in the center of our city. The August 2023 photos document the extended debris and junk materials surrounding the structure. These conditions contribute to blight and present harming the structure. These conditions contribute to blight and present an ongoing fire hazard. Al Burton, this site has been cited repeatedly for solid waste accumulation, abandoned vehicles, and unmanaged growth. Complaints and field inspections have verified that the location contributes to neighborhood degradation and poses environmental concerns. Again, off of Woodland, located behind the police department here. Initial conditions were documented July of 2022, showing piles of trash, miscellaneous materials, and overgrowth in vehicles. These violations were addressed through multiple notices, but minimal corrective action was taken by the property owner. Nearly three years later, photos show that the violations persist despite repeated warnings. Property remains cluttered with debris and shows no significant signs of voluntary compliance. City recommends abatement and cost recovery under terms of the grant. 3228 Third Street, associated with case number CE23-0725. Property is owned by Erica Vargas Alvarez. This site has been cited for ongoing code violations, including trash accumulation, overgrown vegetation, and the presence of inoperable vehicles. While initial outreach was made to the owner, no abatement action has been completed. And this is out in the area of the park on Third Street. As shown in the May 2023 images, debris and clutter are spread across the property, with evidence of prolonged neglect, code enforcement issued no violation order to abate following this documentation, including this residence. Photos from April 2025 confirm that no significant improvement has occurred. Site continues to contribute to neighborhood blight and does not meet minimum safety or sanitation standards. Staff recommends abatement. 3297 Third Street, property is associated with case number CE231825 and owned by Mildred Y. and Leon T. Pandarvis. The violations at the property include persistent junk and debris, storage, overgrown vegetation, and fire hazards. Initial complaints were received in mid-2023. Inspections confirmed code violations. And this map shows in the area of the park off of Third Street. These images from August 2023 and September of 2024 show the scale of the nuisance conditions despite ample time for cleanup, multiple citations, follow-up notices. Property remained in violation through both inspection periods. Most recent photo from April 2025 shows continued inaction, accumulation of refuse and unchecked vegetation remains. This site is included in the CalRecycle Grant abatement list due to its contribution to solid waste issues and fire risk. 3152 Ninth Street, and associated with case number CE24-1531. Property is owned by Mary A. and Constantine T. Mavrotis. It has been identified for abatement due to excessive waste accumulation, unsafe structures, and unmaintained vegetation. Staff has issued multiple administrative notices and continued inspections confirming that violations persist. And this map shows that it's in the park area of the city of Clear Lake on Ninth Street. Photos from August 2024 show extensive trash and refuse covering the lot, creating both a public nuisance and environmental hazard. These conditions were initially addressed with an order to abate and follow-up correspondence to the owner. This photo taken again in April 2025 is the most recent inspection. The site remains largely unchanged despite official notice to, no corrective action has been taken. The ongoing presence of waste and overgrowth threatens community safety and justifies city-initiated abatement.
Is there somebody living in that?
In the one to the left, there was a couple, and we've provided them with outreach to facilitate them hopefully finding some housing. 3426 12th Street, under case number CE22-0926, is owned by Jerry A. and Alice M. Lewis. This case involves continued violation for property neglect, including unpermitted structures, overgrown vegetation, accumulation of household waste materials. Repeated attempts to engage the property owners have not resulted in compliance. Again, the area of the park located in the city of Clear Lake. This photo from May of 2022 shows a deteriorating property, excuse me, including visible trash heaps of yard neglect. These images formed a basis for the original code enforcement case, and the property has since remained under scrutiny. Nearly three years later, the April 2025 images show no improvement. The property remains in violation, continuing to attract illegal dumping, reduce neighborhood livability. It qualifies for abatement under the CalRecycle Grant due to its persistent environmental hazards. It's also under red tag. 3307 13th Street is associated with case number CE23-2080. Property is jointly owned by Larry and Alice Evelyn, along with Leo Lano Brasher. It has been cited for excessive junk and debris, suspected illegal occupancy, and lack of vegetation maintenance. Despite multiple inspections, notice postings, violations not been resolved. Again, in the park area of the city of Clear Lake. In October 2023, photos revealed scattered trash signs of unauthorized In October 2023, photos revealed scattered trash signs of unauthorized habitation and safety concerns leaked to this, and there was also a fire structure ended up being burned. As you can see in the next photos that were taken in April, no changes occurred with this property. 3188 14th Street. Case number CE 221674 is owned by Bonnie M. Colton. Property has been cited for persistent, already conditioned trash, unmanaged vegetation. This site has been red tagged and passed due to unsafe structural and sanitary conditions. Again, in the park. These photos from September of 2022 document heavy accumulation of waste, dilapidated conditions, and serious fire risks. These images were taken shortly before initial notices were issued to the property owner. Next two slides are images from April of this year, showing little, no improvement. The volume and junk debris remains substantial, and the property continues to pose significant health and safety risks is strongly, strong candidate for abatement under the Cal Recycle funding. 3059 East Lake Drive, associated with code enforcement case CE 21-1604. Property is owned by Brad G. Taylor, has a history of significant violation, including banded personal property, inoperable vehicles, trash accumulation, unmanaged vegetation. Staff efforts to gain compliance has spanned multiple years with limited response from the property owner. In the area of off of East Lake Drive. This photo from October shows the red-tagged residence and environmental hazards. These photos from April of this year shows that windows have been boarded up, but no significant change to the property has been made. 3223 East Lake Drive, associated with case number CE 22-1816, owned by Remy Robert Daniels and Dina Lee Daniels. This property has been cited for multiple violations, including overgrown vegetation, illegal dumping, unstable conditions. Despite multiple notification, field inspections, no corrective action has been taken. Again, map showing the area where it's located off of East Lake Drive. These photos taken in February document the debris scattered throughout the property and the unsafe conditions from the vegetation. This, this property, CC for C, goes out and clears it and ends up being right back in the same condition. So there's been other volunteers that have cleaned up that area as well. So this is new debris. To conclude, all 14 properties presented remain in violation and failed to reach compliance. City has made reasonable and repeated efforts to work with property owners in the interest of protecting public health, safety, and our environment. Staff recommends that the council deny the appeals and adopt Resolution 2025-16. This action will allow us to proceed with necessary abatement using available Cal Recycle Grant funds. It is also worth noting that during Phase One appeals, which occurred on November 7, 2024, appeals were submitted. At that time, the city council denied those appeals, and we advised the appellant that if the nuisance, nuisances were abated before the scheduled abatement date, the properties would be removed from the list with no further action. The properties for those appeals successfully came into compliance, and they were removed from the abatement list without further action by the city. This demonstrates our commitment to voluntary compliance, compliance wherever possible. That concludes this presentation.
Thank you, Lieutenant Peterson. Are there any questions by council, the staff on this item?
Vice Mayor.
You mentioned it, I think it was number seven, that were people living in that place? Were there other places that were occupied or transient? What's your normal process?
For the occupancy portion? So again, we try to get people, resources either to, you know, and, and guidance to help abate these, these issues. When I contacted, there was two subjects, a male and a female in the far-left RV, and their response is that they've been trying to clean it up. The property right next to it is also that in that photo, the very right is also a red-tagged residence, and they're basically bringing more onto that property. There's been nothing taken off of that property, so it's adding more nuisances to that vacant lot.
Good, thank you, thank you. Are there any other comments?
I have a question. So for the people that you just mentioned that came into compliance and the city worked with them, does the city renegotiate the fees or the citations that have accumulated up to that point? Because I imagine that they could probably be pretty hefty.
So that would come down, that's separate from the abatement process, so that there's other appeal hearings and things that they can go through for those type of issues. But yeah, typically when there's, like, when someone's issued a citation, you have the initial violation. If that's not paid, then it can start adding up.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's dealt with on a case-by-case basis to where we can not harm our citizens more. But also get, get the compliance and reimbursement for the time spent as well.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add on to that.
Yes.
A little bit. So as the citations are issued, the municipal code has an appeal process, so you get the citation. If you disagree with it, you can file an appeal, and there's a hearing with the hearing officer about that. And so that's really the best process. I mean, in, in few situations have we, you know, significantly negotiated outstanding citations, but it has happened in some cases based on the circumstances. So, but reminder for the council, the reason over the last several years we've been able to get more compliance is because of the administrative citation process. And unfortunately, in many of these cases, it takes a large accumulation of citations to, to get property owners' attention and then potential voluntary compliance.
Are there any other questions from council? I'll now open the public hearing. This is time for public comment. Is there anyone in the chambers who wishes to comment on any portion of this item?
I'm Margaret Garcia, City of Clear Lake. I'm just wondering how, if you could tell me, this, a property gets on this list, because I, you know, there are many properties in the city that are similar, if not worse. But I'm just curious how that ball starts to roll on that. That's all, thank you.
Lieutenant Peterson, you want to address that?
So there's multiple factors. One would be like, as you can see with the burnt structures, you know, those create an immediate risk. So we look at if there's any chance for compliance, like described in the presentation, some of the owners, they're deceased with no other person to take over the property. It's also what we, we look at how long the case has been open, amount of violations, the dangers of the violations. So it, and then there's a balance of how much we have for like this. In this case, we have a grant, so we have a limited amount of funds. So how can we best serve the entire community, cleaning up as many properties with the limited amount of funds that we have?
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add one other thing that
Absolutely.
We often factor in is visibility of the properties. You know, as Ms. Garcia mentioned, there's, there's a lot of options out there for something like this, but if there's a continual refusal to addressing the issues and it is a highly visible property, that often puts it higher on the priority list.
There are, there are circumstances, though, and when they come up, I'm sure that you do give them their due. Are there any other questions from, any other comments about this from the public? One up.
Patty Duke, Clear Lake. So there was a free bring your debris across the way. I think it was last year for it to be taken away, put in the big bins and stuff. But it's a matter of getting it there, because not everybody has the ability to haul. So I thought it was great, but I know a lot of people don't have the ability to haul their green waste and stuff, and I don't know if there's a possibility of that ever being addressed to help people remove waste that they can't afford to haul. Okay, because I thought that was a really good deal, but I know there's a lot of people who can't get there. So that's my thought.
Thank you, Mrs. Duke. Any other public comments in the chamber? Madam Clerk, are there any comments submitted on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any comments from council for deliberation on this item? Seeing none, I'll take a motion either to deny the appeal or, or accept it. Those are your two choices.
I'm waiting. I move that we approve Resolution Number 2025-16, a resolution of the city council of the city of Clear Lake granting, no, that's the wrong one. City denying the appeals of order to abate in reference to the real property located at 15893 33rd Avenue, 16721 Cache Creek Lane, 4800 Old Highway 53, 4782 Yerickton Court, 4030 Hayward Avenue, 14042 Woodland Drive, 3228 Third Street, 3297 Third Street, 31529 Street, 3426 12th Street, 3307 13th Street, and 3188 14th Street, 3059 East Lake Drive, and 3223 East Lake Drive in accordance with Chapter X of the Clear Lake Municipal Code.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Sloaden. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Hooton. Please vote on your portal. Our, do we need to vote in the portal or in this? Okay. Let's know what it says here.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now we're going to move to item number eight, and for this, I'm going to recuse myself. I represent the appellant in this action, so I will be stepping outside the chambers. Vice Mayor Sloaden will take over for this item.
Okay, this is item number eight, this is a public hearing.
Vice Mayor Sloaden, your microphone, please.
Exit it, thing, okay. Okay, item number eight. We here to hear and act upon appeals of order to abate for the property located at 6725 Old Highway 53 in accordance with Clear Lake Municipal Code, Chapter 10. Lieutenant Peterson, could you please give the staff report?
Thank you. This presentation concerns the appeal of abatement order for a single property under the Phase Two scope of the Cal Recycle Grant program. Tonight, the council will consider the appeal of an order of abate issued for the property located 6725 Old Highway 53, associated with code enforcement case CE 23-0045. The site owned by Frida A. Hillsbeck, trustee, which has been determined to be a public nuisance following multiple inspections and enforcement actions. The council has asked to evaluate the case record and determine whether to grant, deny, or modify the abatement order. This property is among those prioritized for abatement on the Cal Recycle Grant, which aims to address widespread illegal dumping and reduce fire hazards. The grant allows the city to remove trash, debris, and hazardous conditions from problem properties to improve safety and environmental health in our neighborhoods. The appeal hearing provides an opportunity for the property owner to contest the city's findings. After reviewing evidence and testimony, the council may grant the appeal and adopt a resolution confirming that no nuisance notices, including the order to abate, notice of intent to abate, were mailed and posted on the property. It was taken January of 2023. Based on the site history of non-compliance, its ongoing risk to public safety, staff recommends denial of the appeal and adoption of Resolution 2025-17. This will authorize city to proceed with the abatement in alignment with Cal Recycle Grants. And again, additionally, during the city Phase One appeal hearings held on November 7, 2024, two similar appeals were submitted and denied. At that time, we advised the appellant that if the nuisances were voluntarily abated before the scheduled abatement date, the properties would be removed from the list with no further action. Both cases of properties were brought into compliance, and the city took no further enforcement steps. And again, this reflects the city's commitment to voluntary compliance, compliance while maintaining accountability where necessary. That concludes the presentation.
Any questions from staff, from the council?
You do, please go ahead.
So we received an email with photos today. I believe that they were of cleanup that has happened at this property probably pretty recently. I just wanted to know if somebody could confirm that.
I believe that's what the case is. So I did, I did receive an email showing some photos. I do know over the past last week, CC for C has been out there starting to clean up the property of the debris. But again, the, there's still violations that exist. Cases go back clear into past 2019 of this being continued property, having the same consistent issues. The concern, again, is because of the blight, the fire risk, being so close to a school and the area of the village, which is a very densely populated area of our community. With only a couple ways to get in and out of that area, if fire was to start, it would, it would devastate, as we've seen from past fires. It doesn't, you know, as I noted in both presentations, we have worked with property owners that came to appeal to abate. The council upheld the resolution, and if it was, and those that got into compliance were taken off the list prior to any abatement or enforcement action. So those options still could apply here.
Okay, any more questions from staff? No? Okay, go ahead.
I have one more. When, when the properties are added and they're added to this abatement and the clearing is done, there's still, the property owners are still going to be responsible for the fees that have incurred through the citation processes?
Yes, because that's a completely separate separate issue.
Okay, not any, we open it to the public. Any public comments?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Frida Hillsback. Again, this beautiful Lake County, which we like, beautiful weather, fresh air, clean water, well, the water is not that clean, but we like, enjoy the fishing and the water sports and everything, okay? And we have dreamed probably even retire here, but unfortunately, life doesn't come out as you dream and as you want. 2018, my husband passed away. And before that, he took care of everything, keeping up the lot clean or whatever, any, everything. I'm just in a lady of the house, keep the house clean, okay? So 2018, he passed away. So 2018, he passed away, and of course, everything's come up to me. I have no idea what it is. And over the years, I believe that he had engaged people, cleaned up the lot, because we have other lot too, including the second home that we owned, you know, spray it, rewhacking or keep it, the property fire safe, okay? So anyway, 2019, I got the first citation, and actually, I got four citation. And I took care of that. I paid the fine, and I even come into the city hall because I have no idea what it is. I panicked, and all I did is just come to the city hall and ask for what to help me. Jen is the person in the office, help me. I came for several times, so we ironed it out, I paid for the fee, and I have records on that, on every one of those citation, pay for the fee. That's 2019. And I have proved that also have weed spray that I pay for to spray the lot, which is only cost $450, and I have also have supporting document for that, my check and the receipt. And the person who did that was called RGW Groundkeeping, and it was referred by Jen from the city hall, that, because I have, I don't know anybody, I have no idea. She said, use them, which I did. 2021, and also I received citation, and at that time, the law enforcement is Cooper, I think, Gary Cooper? Gary Copper? Gary Copper, okay, Gary Cooper. I met with him several times, come to the lot, what need to be done, and he was telling me everything, we come back again several times, and again, I paid for case excavation, I guess, blind case, clear the weed, and I paid for it, $1,400. And he met Officer Cooper, say forty, forty feet away from the site, so that's what we did. 2022, again, I got citation, so I asked case again. This is in March 2922. The property line, he cleared, and I have document that the proposal he did, cleared property line on this, from the store, the property is from the store to the school, facing the road, right, which is quite long. And the proposal was, and the job he did, and was cleared by Officer Copper after finish. And I was there, everybody's there, we checked, everything's okay. He cleared. What he did is, this is his proposal, word by word, clear property line on, from the store to the school, in forty feet from the road, trim up the trees, cut the grass to less than four inches per city Clear Lake standard. Same will be done from the backside of the property in forty feet, trim up trees and grass as was done last year. So he did that two years in a row. I paid $13,600 for that job. That is 2022. 2023, okay, after my husband passed away, I do a lot of traveling, and actually, a lot of time, I live aboard, about three, four, five months at a time. So 23, 24, the citation just coming up every two weeks. I don't even see it, okay? Anyway, that's not the point. I was out of the country a lot, and also, I contacted COVID. I was sick with diverticulitis, I was hospitalized. It took me months and months, I was dealing with health issue. Remember, I have seventy-something, okay? Health coming haunt you. 2024, I travel overseas a lot, and, and also, I have, while I was overseas, I developed sciatic nerve, I have, I could hardly walk. Actually, I was laying, laid down for about, lay out for ten days, couldn't even walk. And I was from Copenhagen, flying back to Dublin, I mean, I could, I was so sick, they have to carry me off the plane and call 911, ambulance, took me, airport ambulance, took me to emergency, and I was hospitalized at Dublin for ten days, again, with diverticulitis and sciatic nerves. And by the time I come home, Kaiser continued to be, I was dealing with major medical problem. Not going to go into it, okay? I lost 20 pounds, not going to go into it. 2025, this year, and I actually contacted Russ, Russ Kramer, I asked him for help because I get, I was, I tried to clean up all those citation. The citation was stacking up. I start to open it up and look at it and analyze it, and I say, listen, I got to, help me, what to do? I need, tell me direct, give me direction. I need to clear up those things. So, so, so anyway, we got a plant, we contacted CC4C to help, and, and also that, in the meantime, he's, I think, we also contacted, I signed a form to, giving permission to, to, what is called this, today I just met him, crack, hogback, breach crew to help us to do, to clean up. And also, we helped plant to rewhacking, in other words, we tried to do something, okay? And so, this most recent work we did, okay, I understand, I would not understand that I did, okay? On April 2nd, I signed a clear form, form for crack to allow them to enter to clear the land, because I had to give them permission. So I signed it, I emailed them, which I also have evidence here. This is the case, 2022, which I read, and I paid for $13,600. This is 2021, kept to case. This is 2021, I pray, paid for some fine.
Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me, ma'am, can you go on and tell you what, what, you, what you want us to do?
April, April 2nd, I did that. We contacted CC4C to help. On April 16, the Ross Kramer sent a voicemail to code enforcement, because I say I received the, the, no citation, and, and let them know that we are, we are working on it, that Frida Hillsbeck is working on this case, okay? On April 23rd, Ross Kramer emailed, and I got a copy, to the city manager, Alan Flora, am I pronouncing your last name right? Sorry if I mispronounce it. And Chippewa Police, you got a copy, and the co-enforcement director, is that you?
You, me.
Oh, okay, I don't know, I didn't have, I forgot the name. And, and give you the, advises you that we are planning to, planning to clean up, the procedure, the process, it's being processed. And also advise you, I guess, that, because I asked him to, he's coordinating this too. So the CC4C is already started work, which is the lady who, Barbara, I forgot her last name, advised me that, she was there on April 21, the group, the 29, the 30th, and today, and doing the cleanup. They have backup everything. And, and today, also, the crate crew is there. They have the big machine, the things, oh wow, they are working on it. They will be working on it tomorrow. And they are not just pushing back 40 feet. The good news is, they are doing 100 feet from the roadside. That's double, more than double. So I'm sure that's, it's good news, right? So here I am today. I'm asking you respectfully to let, allow us to continue to do the cleanup, but we need time, and continue to clean up. And also, I want to be a responsible citizen. I admit, maybe I have overlooked or delayed some of the citation fee, but I would be willing to cooperate with the city and do whatever I have to do, settle the citation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So this is what I'm asking for.
Okay, thank you.
And my goal, I mean, with the city goal is basically, is do the same thing. Keep the city clean, keep the city safe.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you for allowing me.
Is there any other person from the public that wants to speak? Please come on down to the podium. The lady, that was, that was, that was Frida.
For the record, my name is Barbara Christwitz, and I am, I live in Clear Lake. I'm with Citizens Caring for Clear Lake. So before I say anything else, I, I hope each one of you, even though there are all kinds of no trespassing signs on Frida's property, I hope you go there and take a look and see what it looks like after, because we picked up about three dozen big bags of garbage in the last couple of weeks, and, and it's looking very good. Now, I know some, there earlier, it showed how we've cleaned things up, and then they're just bad again. Well, one of the people that helped clean up this morning lives a block away from that property, and my suggestion is that perhaps Frida would hire that person to go every week and just take a look at the property, see how it's going as part of that responsibility. So Frida gave lots of history just now, and I'm saying that as of today, things are looking good. Clerk was out there today, they'll be out there tomorrow, they're rewhacking, they're, they're trimming the trees back, and it's, it's very close to compliance as we speak. So I did write up a few things, and I want to say them, just that I am asking for leniency for Frida Hillsbeck, for her vacant lots, and although many of her citations were ignored due to her illnesses in 2023 and 2024, and hospitalization, and being out of the country, she is now, she is now working on it, and, and at her expense, and once she has become aware of the citations, she is more than rectifying this situation, making her vacant lots not only fire safe but beautiful. Having met Frida, I am confident that she will continue to be the responsible landowner that she is being today. I realize that she is aggressive in her care for her land, ordering it to be cleared all the way back to the woods, probably 100 feet rather than the required 40 feet from the road. And if you do go back there to take a look, you don't have to be so afraid of poison oak, because Amy has taken her clippers and she's made a path so that, so that you can see through that. Almost done here, and she asked if CC4C would take a month to, or, she would ask that we would clean this area. While I predicted it would take a month, I'm pleased to report that we did it in about three or four days, and we is Khalil, Miles, you know, Miles, Amy, Nicole, Scott, Jody, and her nephew, and me. And, and we have piled up approximately three dozen large bags of trash, which will be taken out next week, a mattress, poles, chairs, a wheelbarrow, tents, and clerk, which is Clear Lake Environmental Research Center, was rewhacking and cutting branches today and will be there again tomorrow.
Thank you, Barbara.
And I'm done. Yeah, thanks. Appreciate your listening.
Good evening, Honorable Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Russ Perdak, I'm a resident of Clear Lake. I'll also be volunteering with CC4C and using my equipment to go in and haul the trash out once everything's done and picked up. I was present, and I met Frida, actually, I think for the first time, after she had returned home from Europe and had received and actually had the box of notices that she was receiving for the first time. I'm going to go a little further in this, and I'm going to ask that you approve her appeal and see what you can to try to mitigate some of the citations. She didn't receive any of the notices, she didn't know there was an issue until all of this landed in her lap. That can be pretty, I believe she's looking at almost $30,000 in fines and fees, and I have a great deal of respect for code enforcement, I support code enforcement 100% in cleaning up and beautifying our city. But in this case, I think through her relationships with Jen, I'm hoping that there would be a phone number or an email, because when someone is away, they're not receiving their mail at that mail receptacle, and that was, that was the situation in this case. So I think when she returned home, she had all these notices, and it's quite overwhelming. At least that was my impression when she shared that with me. And we went out and visited the site, saw considerable damage, saw damage to gates and things during that visit. I didn't see the dumping, because it was deep within the property. But again, CC4C is taking care of that. We're going to go out and haul the garbage, and I think the property owner has presented a decent case that she is responsible, and will work with the city to clean it up. Again, I just ask that you approve that appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wants to address the council? Yeah, you can come again, ma'am.
I'm very sorry.
Please, please use the mic.
Very sorry. I'd like to show this a few picture that I took today, and if it's possible.
Do you give it to the, to lieutenant here?
If it's possible, let me approach and show you. This is the bag. Oh, this is the bag that's a CC4C, already bagged it, ready to remove it. And this is the crate. Okay. All the stuff is, all right.
Thank you. I think there was one other person that wanted to address the council.
Go back to seat.
Yes, please.
Hi, Margaret Garcia, I live here in the city of Clear Lake. This owner is obviously not your typical owner of your typical light property, and I'm wondering, I'm sure some of this couldn't have been taken care of like before the meeting, outside of this meeting environment, but it's good to know that some of the council members are willing to go to bat for folks that are, you know, in need of help. But I would think this could have been taken care of outside of this environment, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, just two procedural points. I want to remind the council actually what they're here for. What the council is here is to consider the, the appeal. The council does not have the authority tonight to, to make any modifications to fines, fees. And the, the second procedural note is that I would remind the lieutenant's statement that while it's appreciated certainly, updated photos of compliance, the lieutenant has stated multiple times that should compliance be achieved, that abatement would not move forward. I just want to remind the council of that. So there are multiple times that, that property owners have the opportunity to address fines and fees when they receive administrative citations, and for the, some of the new council members that might not know this, that if those are appealed... that if those are appealed, the hearing officer actually has the authority to reduce those fines and fees at that time. So that's not before the council tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments, or any public commentary on this item? If not, is there anybody on Zoom, Madam Clerk?
There are no comments on Zoom, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Bring him back to the council for discussion.
I do have something to say. I mean, I appreciate you, Frida, for coming up here and speaking and fighting for your property. One things I do have concerns with is just the reoccurring issue. It obviously affects the health and safety of the community. And one of those neighborhoods is the one I live in, and I own a house. Another one is Councilmember Hooton and Mary Wilson. So, I mean, one of the questions you have to ask yourself is that, are you willing to live with the burden of a potential fire and it burning down a neighborhood because you don't keep up your property? So that's a question you got to ask yourself. And another thing is, is like, what are you willing to do to continue this and not just let it go? And do you have steps to take where it's a continued cleanup? Are you going to plan on fencing it in to prevent people from, you know, pitching tents and living there? Because that's how fires start. They start cooking and tents burn down. And so what are some things that you will be doing to prevent it from happening and not reoccur?
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, like I said, now I know the situation.
The public hearing is closed, ma'am, so we got to move on.
She can't say anything?
Not at this point.
I mean, it's a question I really would like to know.
Absolutely. Absolutely, that, you know, I, I make the commitment, and I do my best. I mean, now I know the situation. I, maybe I was a little bit in la la land, a little bit, combined with my problems, health issue that, you know, I was not paying attention. Now I can tell you that I'm going to pay a hundred percent, maybe double.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. You know, I have children, I have grandchildren, I have great grandchildren. I want them to live in a safe environment. And that's, I'm going to treat that property, it's just like I've lived there, for sure. Like I said, it's, I made the commitment, and I will do it. And it will, it will show for the next.
Any other comment?
Few months.
Any other comments or discussion?
And like Barbara says, I'm asking for thirty days, and we'll clean it up. And, and the picture have showed that it's today, how much progress we have.
Okay.
And it won't take that long, Vice Mayor.
I know.
Go, go ahead, but then we have to close this.
I understand that, and I understand the procedurally. But she was asked a question by Councilmember Downey, and I wanted. The property is posted. It has no prop, no trespassing signs. And the city has a responsibility to cite people who are trespassing and to deal with homeless issues and with people dumping illegally, also with illegal fires. So for a property like this, the city also shares responsibility.
Okay.
And we're into work together, okay?
Great, thank you.
We're partnership.
All right, we're back to the council. The public hearing is closed, and we'll have conversation. Here at the council, anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, okay, okay, ma'am, we have to continue. If I, Mr. Vice Mayor, if I could just add a couple of things. One, the last comment, this is the process that the city has to deal with those issues. And then, I, I think there's a way to give Ms. Hilsabek time, if you would like, because we need to move forward with procuring a contractor to do the work on all of these abatements. So I believe the, the best way to make sure the property gets cleaned up would be to deny the appeal, to keep the pressure on Ms. Hilsabek to ensure that the property becomes compliant. If it, if she fails to do that, we will use our contractor to do it. If it's done before we move forward with our contract, then we will no longer need to move forward with that part of the project, and we will be able to reallocate the funds to clean up light on other property.
What's the timeframe on that?
Do you want to address it, two months?
Yeah, I mean, realistically, it's going to be forty-five days to sixty days. I mean, we have to put the notice out, go out to bid, have a pre-bid meeting with contractors, get the bids from the contractors, come back to council again. So we're, you know, the time period she proposed, if she completes in that time period, we, I mean, we will not be discussing this property any further in the future.
So, have somebody want to make a motion?
I think, oh, can I make a comment? I, I, I think that her proactiveness is really saying, speaking for what she intends to do. And I think I would hate to tie up the funds that we might use for her property if we can maybe find a different property to allocate those funds to if we're going to be putting them out for bid, if we have anything else.
But we have to either deny the appeal.
Sure. So I guess I'm encouraging, I would, I'll be moving to deny it, so.
Okay, so that's the process that our city manager suggested, so the pressure is on.
Yeah.
And just to answer that specific question.
Approve. I meant approve. I, I would like to approve the appeal and remove this from the list of properties being bid on.
Yep. I'll make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to.
And you would have, it has to be a resolution?
Two zero two five dash seventeen. Two zero two five, five dash seventeen, a resolution of the City Council of, the City of Clear Lake denying the appeal of orders to abate in reference to the real properties located at six seven two five Old Highway fifty-three in accordance with Chapter X of the Clear Lake Municipal Code.
So we, we need, we need clarification here. I'm confused. So Councilmember Hooton, are, are you making a motion? The way you just stated your motion respectfully was to deny the appeal, but that's a correction from what you stated in terms of wanting to grant the appeal, which would end this case.
Grant the appeal. Yes, I would like to grant the appeal.
So Councilmember Hooton's motion is to grant the appeal.
Okay. Babe, we have a second on that?
I second that.
Okay, we'll go to our.
So, in order to agree with Councilmember Hooton, what do we, how do we vote?
We vote to grant the appeal.
Yeah.
Okay, so just for clarification, and obviously, I don't have a Gabe in this fight, or dog in this fight. The motion and the second are to grant the appeal. That is contrary to what staff is recommending in terms of denying the appeal, sitting to wait to see whether the work is completed. And if the work is completed, then no further abatement would be necessary. Those funds would be reallocated to another property. So the motion that's on the table with a second right now that closes the discussion is to grant the appeal, which ends the code enforcement action on this, the pending code enforcement action on this property. So that's what I have to say.
Okay, are we all?
Yeah.
Good, so would you grant the appeal?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second on that, just to make sure?
I second that.
Okay, we'll go back to a voting.
I don't know if it's working.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council and Mayor Kramer absent.
Okay. Want to call Mr., our mayor back into the chamber?
Sorry for the confusion.
Okay. Time flies. Well, we have city manager reports.
Oh, reports here.
Okay, you're back.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay.
Number I, city manager and council.
Thank you for getting me back on track. So. We'll resume, or I'll resume now, conducting the meeting. And we'll move on to city manager and council member reports. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, I have a number of things to report. First off, you received an email today from the city clerk about having, adding June nineteenth as a regular meeting to the calendar for our budget. So if you could get back to the city clerk as soon as possible so we can try and confirm a date that works. May thirteenth at eleven AM is our annual flag raising ceremony at Austin Park. Hopefully, all of you can make it. Quick update on the Boils Fire. There's been a number of delays, and cleanup is still not complete. The latest delay was a result of there was a fatality at the park fire as part of the cleanup effort, not here, but that caused a statewide halt in all debris cleanup operations. Well, they reviewed their safety protocols. So it's supposed to restart on Monday. They're expecting to release all properties within the next two weeks. It's caused a lot of property owners to be upset because most of them have, that do have insurance, have a two-year window to complete their rebuild. And we spent, you know, getting close to a year now, just with this debris cleanup process, so. There is a project that's going to be starting around Walmart on the city-owned property next Tuesday. Over the next couple of weeks, Cal Fire and City Crews will be doing cleanup work on that property, which may or will include some controlled burning. So just beware of that.
It's on the roadie?
Yes. Yeah. It is May first, so vegetation abatement, property owners should be focusing on that, or they will be on the list that we've been discussing tonight. So folks need to make sure and get vegetation abated so our community can be safe. I was hoping to have the rental registration ordinance back on the agenda tonight, but we did get comments from the Realtors Association, which were quite lengthy. We did have a meeting with several representatives, which was, I believe, quite productive. And so we're making some recommended changes to the ordinance and hoping to bring that back at the May fifteenth meeting.
To comment on that, I heard from one Realtor was really pleased with the meeting and with the, with the results of it. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. I had reported previously that we submitted, as you know, three community-funded projects to Congressman Thompson for funding this year. And we were notified that none of those projects would be moving forward because he, the, they still haven't adopted a federal budget for last year. And so he was pushing the projects that he'd recommended last year to try to get them through. On Friday, they contacted me and said that one of the projects, which was focused on public safety cameras, they found a path to get that through. And so they asked us to make some, a few revisions to have it be focused more on public safety than wildfire detection. So we made those revisions, we submitted it. We're hoping that that one will be funded, just so you know, there is a path still to do the wildfire detection stuff that we had wanted with this process. It's just a bit of gamesmanship to get it through the House Appropriations Committee. So we'll keep you updated on that. I'll be having a meeting with various county departments on Monday related to tax-defulted properties in the city. The county is considering a number of steps that could significantly impact us because of the high volume of tax-defulted properties that we have. So I will give you an update on that discussion later. As you know, we talked about additional streetlights. We have executed a contract to have an audit of our system done, a more detailed audit, which would include, you know, maps and a lot more detail, kind of the next step of the existing system. So that'll be moving forward. Supervisor Sabatia and myself have been working with a contractor who wants to install some technology along Austin Beach and Burns Valley Creek that is nano bubble technology, which they introduce ozone into the water and helps clean that up. So this is something they're hoping to get funded through the Blue Roomin' Committee. So keep you updated as that project moves forward. You may have been aware that there was a bill proposing a number of amendments to AB fifty-two, which is a tribal consultation bill by our Assemblywoman. And there's been a lot of pushback over that bill from a lot of different things. And so it was polled, it was supposed to be in committee this week, it was polled. And a little frustrated that our own Assemblywoman didn't talk to us about this more. And I know some of you have been as well. And she has committed to getting our input on some amendments moving forward. As mentioned earlier, but if you've been trying to get around town this week, it takes a little more time than normal because of the striping projects. It's looking good, should be complete in the next couple of weeks. Another project that also started this week was a long-awaited gateway signs, which will be three large signs along the Highway fifty-three corridor. That's the kind of final piece of our Clean California Grant Project. So the signs, I thought, were supposed to be installed next week, but they hit a lot of rock that they haven't been able to get the footings in. So we're going to have to do a little bit of a redesign. But I, I'm hoping that we'll actually be able to see these. And then there's, should be a small amount of project funds left, which we're, we're purchasing some benches for around the splash pad and some additional picnic tables and stuff that will be installed at Red Buck Park. Next week, the senior center irrigation project will finally start, so there'll be some activity around there. Slurry seal on Austin, which is kind of the final part of the Tree Streets project, should be starting next week. The remainder of the Clinic Park project is still on hold as we're continuing to wait on Golden State to complete some waterline replacement in that area. They're almost done with the design, but it's likely to be sometime after July first before that's complete. The city had a traffic safety committee meeting this week and a number of. Yeah, I just want to thank the staff, or I know Chief Hobbs and our Public Works Department did a lot of work on policies and procedures around what it takes to, you know, qualify for installing a stop sign, speed bumps, all those things. And this hasn't been something that's been a, a significant area of focus because the community's been more focused on actually getting a paved street. And now that we're almost growing up into a real city, we're having to deal with things like we don't have enough stop signs and people are driving faster and things like that. So we're putting together a policy and a process to analyze those requests and move them forward as appropriate. Yesterday, we conducted some fire hydrant testing. So that was, that was really great. We had a meeting on Wednesday with our consultant and representatives from both Highlands Water District and Canockdye Water District to, to plan out and talk through how this was going to work. And then they went out and tested one hydrant in Highlands's district and one hydrant in Canockdye's district. Golden State also had a representative there. They used various pieces of equipment to kind of test things out. It's clear that this type of testing hasn't been done in a very long time, but it seems like both of the districts are jumping into figuring this out and, and getting some of this done. Highlands recently purchased some new testing equipment. And so felt very positive about that. And we'll be meeting again to kind of discuss next steps on that. The last thing I wanted to mention was, already came up a little bit, but clearly cleanup day last Saturday, thanks to all those that participated, unfortunately. It's a little bit smaller crowd than we've had in the last few years. But in my opinion, the areas that we generally clean up, I felt like. opinion, the areas that we generally clean up, I felt like have been cleaner this year when we started than they have been for quite some time. So I think that's positive and that's my report.
Thank you, City Manager Flora. Uh, we'll move on to council members. We'll start with Councilmember Hooton.
I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Councilmember Wilson?
I participated in the area planning council's orientation on Tuesday and learned a lot of things about being alternate for that. And last week I spent considerable time, uh, with interviews for Rotary Scholars and I'm, uh, scholarships. And I'm pleased to say that we have some really good students in the city.
Well, that's, that's great to hear. Thank you for that report. I didn't realize that you had, that we had an alternate, uh, orientation for APC. So I'm glad you attended that. Councilmember Downey?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Vice Mayor Slaughter?
I have nothing to report either. This, this coming couple of weeks, there's all kinds of things going on, but nothing in the past two weeks.
The only thing I had to report, quite honestly, is that I did participate in the cleanup Clear Lake on Saturday. Uh, actually, the lady was talking about the dead fish. I actually picked up a few of those dead fish and it's really ugly. Um, picked up a lot of cigarette butts, going back to our meeting this morning with, uh, tobacco. Um, but yeah, I thought that overall, I thought the, the city looked a lot better and had a lot less visible, uh, stuff around, at least around the Austin's Park and the area that I was at than they had in the past. It was a good event. That's all I have. Um, future agenda items? I don't have any. Nothing?
No.
No, no? All right. Well, we will now adjourn at, uh, seven fifty-nine to close session. Thank you all for-